For Monday, August 1st, 2011. If you'd please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Virchell?
Here.
District One, Morsette?
Here.
District Two, Yacku?
Here.
District Three, Bernard?
Here.
District Four, Wyland?
Here.
District Five, Hoggett?
Here.
District Six, Vanslow?
Here.
This point in our agenda, we take comments and suggestions from any citizens in the audience on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to the council on an issue not on the agenda? One more time, is there anybody that would like to speak to the council on any issue that is not on the agenda? With that, Madam Clerk, if you could read the consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of July 18th, 2011, and the closed session minutes of July 5th, 2011.
Could you pull the 7:18 minutes, please?
Okay.
To approve claims for payments in the amount of $440,768.94. A detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of two regular operators licenses for the period August 2nd, 2011, through June 30th, 2013, and the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used September 24th and 25th, 2011 at the Spirit of the St. Croix Art Festival. Additional operator license information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To schedule a public hearing for 6:55 PM on Tuesday, September 6th, 2011 regarding the request of Stephen Kinney to rezone 805 Hagen Street from OFC to RM1 and amend the 2030 master plan map. To allow Edward Becker to construct a fence within the easement area at 34 Nicholas Way with the condition that the fence shall not block access to the storm sewer manhole and upon execution of an easement agreement. And that is all.
Move for approval.
Is there a second? Second.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yacku?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Consideration of previous minutes, Mr. Morsette?
Under considered amendments to the municipal code for towing and immobilization, both on the motion to suspend rules, I voted no, and I also voted no on the full motion.
To make those changes. Any other changes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. At this time, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to change the agenda a little bit so we can move some people in and get moving, and if that's okay. I'd like to introduce Mike Wilhelmie. He's with the St. Croix Crossing Organization. Mike's going to give us a presentation tonight about the new bridge, or what do we want a new bridge? Mike?
Well, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak today. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Michael Wilhelmie. I live in Stillwater, and I'm the executive director of the Coalition of the St. Croix River Crossing, which is a new nonprofit that's been formed to advocate for the new river crossing. In today's presentation, I want to do very quickly a couple of things. I want to talk about a brief history of the crossing project. I won't talk about all of it because it's a long, that would be a long history. A summary of the bridge project elements, what's actually in the project, and organizational goals and message about the coalition, what we're about as an organization. Also, the authorization update, what we're accomplishing at Congress in order to get this bridge built. And then finally, your appeal for your assistance. I want to recognize Kim Heineman of our Board of Directors who's here as well. Our board consists of ten members from both Minnesota and Wisconsin. On the Wisconsin side, John Soderberg from New Richmond is our chairman. Kim Heineman also serves as our treasurer as well, too. Russ Corpola, Luann Berg, Bill Rubin, and Daryl Standifer make up our Wisconsin members. So first of all, why is it so hard to build a bridge? Why has it taken this long? There's basically three federal laws that govern this project. The Transportation Act of 1966 requires minimizing harm to public parks, recreation areas, wildlife, and waterfall refuges and historic sites. The National Historic Preservation Act also governs this project. There are a number of historic sites in an area that is as old as Wisconsin and Minnesota. And then also, of course, the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. A recent interpretation by the Park Service means that no new construction can be built that will have a direct and adverse impact on any wild and scenic river. So you can't build a rope swing in a wild and scenic river without a permission from Congress now because of the way the law has been interpreted. This is a map of the project area. B1, as you see, that the strong line to the south there is the preferred alternative in the routing of the bridge. Everything you see in red is an historic site that had to be considered when planning the sighting of the bridge and the size and location of the bridge. The three colored areas that you see in purple, green, and yellow are public parks. So there was quite a bit of work that had to be done to kind of categorize all these sites and then plot the correct location for the bridge. Recent history between 1985 and 2000, there were two separate attempts to build this bridge. You'll recall in 1995, the project was moving forward. In Oak Park Heights, many homes were cleared, and the bridge was stopped due to a lawsuit and it was determined that the project did need to meet Park Service requirements and guidelines. There was a second attempt after that to try to bring parties together. Unfortunately, it failed due to some bureaucratic disagreement and also interest group oppositions to that, what was thought to be a neutral project. And so, very wisely, the Federal Highway Administration and both MINDOT and Wisconsin DOT brought in a federal environmental mediator to basically try to broker an agreement. And they brought quite a few folks together. This is a meeting, actually, that was held in Stillwater. Of 27 different organizations, they met for over three years to try to make sure that everyone's concerns were met. These are groups that represent historic preservation, environmental protection, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Coast Guard, just about any federal or state agency that had anything to do with regulating the waterway or the historic area around the bridge. The communities were involved as well, too. They were represented. The main point here is that this is a very comprehensive group with a comprehensive process, and they came to an agreement on the bridge. They had to come to an agreement that basically balanced three competing goals. The need to build a reliable, efficient transportation infrastructure for the region, the need to preserve historic resources in that region, and also protect the Wild and Scenic River. And again, the stakeholder process developed a project that balanced these goals. The elements of the project. First, the transportation elements. A new four-lane crossing located away from historic downtown Stillwater was agreed upon. The bridge would be built near a power plant and sewage treatment plant. The stakeholders want a signature bridge, a distinctive design that was appropriate for a wild and scenic riverway, and also the location least damaging to the environment and to those historic resources that I showed you in the map previously. Also, there are safety improvements built into the project for Highway 36 in Minnesota. A number of intersections are quite congested and dangerous. Those will be fixed so that they are less congested and dangerous. And also Highway 64, the extension of the highway to the new bridge site. And this is the bridge. You can see it's a very unique design. It's a modified cable-stay bridge. If it's built, it will be only a third of its kind in all of North America. It's gorgeous. It's meant to be light and fit into the environment as best it can. It's definitely, it costs a little more than a typical box girder freeway bridge, but you can see the open pillars and column designs, and then also the cable stays. They're meant to be a little lighter touch on the environment. And it's something I think we'll be proud to have in our community, and it will become as iconic as the Stillwater Lift Bridge. And this is just another angle of the bridge from the Wisconsin side. And you can see, this is meant to show the location of the bridge as really not in a very wild or scenic part of this wild and scenic river. That's the Allen S. King Plant you see in the background, in the coal piles. Kind of in the center is the Stillwater Prison. Off to the right, on what would be just north of the landing on the Minnesota side, is the sewage treatment plant and also the Sunnyside Marina. Environmental elements. Significant environmental remediation and new amenities for public enjoyment of the riverway. A new loop trail will be built for pedestrian, walking, and biking. A significant restoration of the existing bluff cuts in Minnesota, and especially in Wisconsin. The idea is that they want to try to restore the road that right now leads down to the Stillwater Lift Bridge to the way it was prior to the construction of the bridge in 1931. Also, we'll remove the old power plant, coal barge terminal, and restore the riverbank and then protect the threatened species of mussels that are in the river. Historic preservation elements. Historic designation for downtown Stillwater, commercial historic district that's been done. Also rehabilitation and restoration of the lift bridge as a signature piece of the loop trail system. It's going to be very unique in the entire park system, this amenity that we will have. It's both a historic preservation project and an environmental project, so the public will enjoy it, and will still continue to operate as a lift bridge as well, too. And then also environmental rehabilitation and historic restoration of the St. Croix overlook site in Oak Park Heights. Total projected cost for the project, the midpoint estimate is $633 million. The state splits are $350 million for Minnesota and $280 million for Wisconsin. Minnesota and Wisconsin for this project will split the cost of shared items, which are basically the bridge itself, the physical part of the bridge, and also the mitigation items I mentioned, the environmental and historic preservation items. And then each state will pay for the roadway improvements and approaches on its side of the river. In Minnesota, there's a little more work to do because of Highway 36. It's a little more difficult to fix existing roadways than it is to build new. And in Wisconsin, you'll be extending over the farm line that's there. Both states will use federal highway dollars for part of their funding and also their state monies. Every dime that we need to build this project is identified. So money is not the issue right now. It's a permission issue, and I'll get into that here in a second. Notable supporters of this project include both governors, Dayton and Walker, Congresswoman Bachmann, Congressman Kind, Krevak, and Duffy, Senators Klobuchar, Cole, Franken, and Johnson. Every state legislator who represents us on both sides of the river supports this project, both the Washington County and the St. Croix County Boards. In fact, the board chairs in both St. Croix and Washington County are on our Board of Directors. Our current situation, Minnesota and Wisconsin again have the funding in place. MINDOT is ready to begin. Basically, though, that recent opinion, it would have been about October of last year, the Park Service indicated that their interpretation of federal law is that no new structure can be built in the riverway without a specific congressional exemption for the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. And so that's what we're working to accomplish. Bills have been introduced in the U.S. House and the U.S. Senate. Congresswoman Bachmann and Senator Klobuchar are the chief authors in their respective chambers. We've had a subcommittee hearing in the U.S. House earlier this spring. Just last Thursday, the U.S. Senate took up the bill in the Park Subcommittee. Hearing went very well, we're very pleased about how things are coming along. There are some project deadlines coming up starting this fall. There's, for some of the money that Minnesota has identified, the federal money, there's a deadline on when it has to be expended otherwise returned to the federal government to be repurposed. And basically, MINDOT needs to know that we can go forward with this project with this money they have identified this fall. And at this point, October 1 is the deadline that they've established. Essentially, we need a congressional approval in this session to make sure that this project can go forward and go forward on time. So the question is, how do we win this time? We've been here before. We've been just about ready to build a bridge a couple of times. So what are we going to do that's going to be different this time that will put us over the top? First of all, as an organization, we believe very deeply that citizens need to be involved in this decision this time. Citizens must make their voices heard that we want a new bridge. Supporters must be organized and speak with one voice. And also, we want project decisions to be made as public as possible. In the past, when decisions have been made by agency folks in Washington or lots of lawsuits, there's been a lot of litigation, obviously, with this project where lawyers and courts make the decisions. We want a decision now, we want it to be made in public, and we want to have an input and impact on that, on those decisions. So we formed the coalition. It was formed this spring. We are a nonprofit organization, a bi-state alliance of local government, business, community, and labor. Our purpose is to educate the citizenry about the project and also advocate for the bridge. We're doing work in both Madison and in St. Paul, also in Washington, D.C. We are advocating for this project in the media and also grassroots citizen outreach that we're performing. Our organizing philosophy, we believe that most people want this bridge, that they want this bridge, and they want it as soon as they can get it. Our opponents are not as great in numbers, but they're well organized with national funding and national influence. In the past, Stillwater hired a lobbyist to try to work on the bridge. Individuals or organizations would volunteer time in the past. They'd send letters of support to their member of Congress, and it just, it wasn't coordinated, and it wasn't, it didn't operate the way it needed to operate in order to be successful. So this time, we hope with a regional coalition, people from both Minnesota and Wisconsin speaking with one voice for their interest, that we can be successful this time. We have professional federal and state advocacy as part of the coalition, including myself. I'm not only the executive director, I'm also the lobbyist for the state of Minnesota on this project. We're doing citizen education involvement and also media relations work as well, too. Our activity to date, we've taken part in many advocacy meetings and lobbying, both federal and state elected officials. We provided reporters and editorial boards with accurate supporting information about this project. It's, again, all part of an effort to educate the public and get their support. We've used our website, our Facebook page, Twitter, and YouTube for public education outreach. I'm excited about the fact that, I'm hoping that this council meeting will be played a couple of times in Hudson, and if folks have questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Also, we're beginning our grassroots campaign to do direct outreach, have meetings with people, different organizations, church groups, all throughout the St. Croix Valley. Our message points, the current lift bridge is obsolete, it's fracture critical, and it's unsafe. It's time to build a new crossing. The St. Croix River Crossing is the right project in the right location. The community bridge plan was created through an open and collaborative process. All other options were reviewed and disqualified. We know we had the right plan. People who support the project care deeply about the river. We are seeking a very narrow exemption to allow a bridge to be built. We do not want to take on or blow up the Wild and Scenic Rivers Act. We just want to build a bridge. And we think that we can do both, we can both protect the river and still have a safe, efficient crossing at the same time. One more look from the bridge. This is the aerial from Stillwater. The new crossing would be about 1.1 miles downstream from the current crossing. 18,000 cars presently use the Stillwater Lift Bridge. It was built to accommodate about 11,000 cars a day. It is obsolete, it's fracture critical, and it's time for a new crossing. Stillwater is excited about the idea of getting their small town back, and folks who are stuck in traffic are excited about not being stuck in traffic anymore. The project itself has a significant economic impact. The bridge project will create thousands of jobs to help area families. We estimate, I should say MINDOT, rather, this is, these are their numbers. MINDOT has estimated about 3,000 direct and indirect jobs will be created each year during the project on average. At the peak of construction, over 6,000 people will be employed on this project either in construction or in supporting industries. The project is not too expensive. It has a positive cost-benefit ratio of 1.53, meaning it's a good return for taxpayers. The project did get a positive record of decision from the U.S. Department of Transportation. They don't give those unless there's a positive return to taxpayers. So we have a good project, and it makes sense. Our next step as an organization, we're trying to build our coalition. We are looking for supporters who will come to our website, lend their names, sign on, and also be vocal. We are doing fundraising as well, too, to support our efforts. Again, the grassroots advocacy work that we're doing, the media relations work that we're doing, the direct lobbying. So we're looking for assistance with that as well, too. Community education, we're doing grassroots meetings throughout the St. Croix Valley, as I mentioned, on our online activity, keeping people posted with project information, also using traditional media. And then again, the lobbying, as I mentioned. We need help to build this community support. We're asking for folks to become members. If you come to our website at stcroicrossing.org, you'll see a green button that says "Join Us." If you click it, you can obtain information. It's pretty simple. We are asking people to like our coalition Facebook page. If you like our page, then you'll get our updates as we post them. And we're trying to post with some regularity to keep people informed about the process. The other thing, too, is to talk about the bridge, that it really can't happen this time. There's, one of the main things we've had to combat is this idea of bridge fatigue. Everyone's so tired of talking about the bridge. You talk about the Stillwater Bridge, and it used to be, the first thing that would happen is people would roll their eyes, "Oh, that thing, again, they'll never build that." Well, they will, they will build that. And we've never been closer than we are today, but we still need to do the work to make sure that we don't lose out at the 11th hour, to make sure that it really does happen this time. Also, we'd love to have invitations to make presentations to groups, organizations that you may be members of. Council members, I gave you 11 cards. One is for you, 10 is for 10 of your best friends. As you go about your business during the day, please give those out. We'd love to, for people to come to our website and learn about the project. And also, we'd love to have invitations for speaking engagements. And then also financial support. I'd like to make a request today for the council's future considerations. We've had some contributions from different local governments. I think you're aware of Stillwater, City of Stillwater has contributed, Washington County has contributed, and we'd make a request of $5,000 as a contribution to the coalition, if we could, please. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions?
Real quick, what is the process of the outcome on Thursday now?
Yes, the hearing was had on Thursday. There won't be another subcommittee hearing. The next step would be the full committee, the Environment and Energy Committee in the U.S. Senate would take up the bill at that time. The chairman did ask some questions of the testifiers, and I believe that all the testifiers at present are, including MINDOT and others, are preparing answers to some of the questions that were answered by the chairman, asked by the chairman. But the process is the same as any other public body that we've worked with before, that the House and the Senate need to pass the same bill on to the president, and the president needs to sign it. So, and that needs to happen in fairly short order, in the next several months.
Any other questions for Michael? Thought we would bring it back to our next meeting if we have any interest in making a contribution. I think I know where we can find the funds, so we'll let, we'll get that to you before the meeting.
I should add, too, just on that point, Mr. Mayor, this is a public and private partnership, so we've raised more in private contributions, it's something we're very proud of, than we have in public contributions, but we think it's important to show the public that, you know, that public bodies care a lot about this project and that it's important to them and that they be represented. So anything you can do would certainly be appreciated and helpful. And again, to reach me, I'm the one who answers our email address, so if you just address your questions to stcroicrossing@gmail.com, they'll come to me.
So were you telling me they're going to close the bridge next week? Marty, had you heard anything like that?
I believe, the, MINDOT is doing safety inspections, and they will close one lane for two weeks on each side as they inspect the bridge, which will cause some traffic tie-ups and some difficulties. It's just, MINDOT is watching that bridge very closely now. You know, it's an 80-year-old fracture-critical bridge, and they just want to make sure that it's safe. They ensure us that it is. It does rank 33 out of 100 on the sufficiency scale. It's probably not going to get much better than that regardless of what they do to it. It just, it needs to be replaced, but they want to make sure that it continues to be safe for people. But it's going to cause some stress for folks who need to use it, the 18,000 trips a day that go across that bridge.
Causes a lot of stress for us, too, in our downtown.
Yes.
Is it being closed in September, Tuesday?
I believe so. Marty, you got some?
I, I hear September, I have a reading, Bob.
Okay.
And if the bill were to pass this fall, realistically, when would construction start?
Right, at this point in time, MINDOT has got a 2013, July 2013, date. As we get closer to that, they'll be able to adjust that forward or back as they need to, but they have, you know, they're ready to go.
So drive to a 2013 opening?
No, no, start, starting construction, letting bids and those things.
And then the length of the project?
It's about a three-year build.
Would be done by August 2013?
We all wish.
Three years, not three months.
It is, it's a three-year build, is the, three construction seasons.
2016, holy cow.
Any other questions? Thank you, we appreciate the information.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Andrea, we got one other person, and then we're going to get back to our agenda, if that's okay with everyone. Everyone okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Yep, sounds good.
Thank you for the invitation to come up this evening. I'm Andrea Jorgensen with Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and I'd like to invite the city council, as well as the community of Hudson, to come share in our community event. To be held September 24th and 25th, we have the upcoming Spirit of the St. Croix Art Festival. And it is a partnership that we are hosting with the FIP Center for the Arts, and we are expecting upwards of 70-plus fine artists in our lakefront park to show their wares and display all the talent that we have in the valley. And we will also be hosting a business marketplace that will also share what businesses and services that our local area and region have to offer. So I would like to invite the whole community out to come and enjoy some fine food, some acoustical music, and some fine art in our St. Croix River Valley. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. At this point, we'll go back to our agenda item and Planning Commission. Mr. Darnold, first one is amendment to Chapter 110, open burning, Section 110-2-JA, are the open burning of areas of prairie landscape to allow areas less than one acre and within other zoning districts. Ordinance number 15-11.
Up until 2005, there was no exceptions to the open burning regulations. At that time, there was an application or request by MIMBAC-CREE to be able to develop a prairie vegetative area, and the city agreed to allow open burning as a management practice for prairie areas. That's the only prairie management area that's been approved by the city since 2005. Received a couple of requests for burning this year. One was the hospital's area was developed prior to the 2005 amendment to open burning regulations. And then we had a request that we'll discuss a little bit later in this meeting. And to allow the possibility of maybe a broader opportunity for prairie vegetation areas, we took the issue to the Plan Commission. They agreed to recommend modifications, the open burning regulations. One was to delete the one-acre minimum area, and then secondly, to broaden the zoning classifications that the open burning could take place if there's an improved vegetative management plan in place. And those additional areas would not, again, would not include the 1 and 2 family residential. What other areas that we would include would be multiple family areas, the public districts where you may have parks, you may have schools, you may have areas that you would use prairie vegetation as an educational tool for those types of locations, and then the planned residential, commercial, and industrial areas. So this allows a little more flexibility in areas to be able to develop prairie vegetation areas, which one of the management alternatives is the possibility of burning. Now, mowing also is a management alternative. Again, this year, we had a request for the hospital to burn. There were some discussions, but some years, the conditions just don't allow burning to occur. Maybe, the conditions may be too wet, maybe too windy, or whatever. And in that case, if we have a pre-skyed burn scheduled, and the conditions aren't right the day of the scheduled burn, the fire chief has the right to call it off. So there are conditions and management considerations that the city, and particularly the fire chief, has control of those. But there is an ordinance, does not require a public hearing because it's not part of the zoning considerations, and that was to change, to eliminate the minimum burning and then add those additional zoning classifications I talked about. You'd have the option, if you're having, you're not, you can have first reading tonight if you want to, or you can suspend the rules and consider it a pro or con.
Thank you. Questions?
Did the Planning Commission consider, looking at some of these different alternatives here, we need to notify people within a quarter mile if the burn is going to happen? We've got some specific requirements about how the burn can occur, but it doesn't say that, and because we only have one or two of these, it doesn't say that the fire department has to be present. Has there been any discussion?
I did ask that question.
No, the fire department does not have to be present. However, I doubt if the fire department approves a burning management plan, it's valid a professional crew at the site, which may actually have more experience in burning and controlling these types of fires than the fire department even has. So they would have to have a professional management group on the site that's practiced and does this type of burning on a regular basis.
Okay, and that's what?
The fire department be on call, they'd be notified of the burn.
All right, that's the part I was asking about, okay?
Any other questions?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Hold call.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yacku?
Yes.
Hoggett?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Move to adopt Resolution 15-11.
Okay.
Is there?
Ordinance.
Ordinance. Ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number two, prairie management plan, about 7,500 square feet north of Stageline Road between Stratford Way and State Highway 35, Lighthouse Village Homeowners Association, Inc.
Now, this is a management plan proposed by the Lighthouse Village Homeowners Association. General location is on the north side of Stageline Road. Stageline Road is the road that runs on the north side of the hospital, out towards the movie theater. This area is just immediately west of State Trunk Highway 35, so it's somewhat in an open area, and the adjacent residential properties are the townhomes to the north, and they're the ones that are proposing the plan. This is a relatively small area, 7,500 square feet. This is a relatively small area, 7,500 square feet, would be an area basically from the entrance of City Hall to the sidewalk to the south on the Walnut Street side and from Third Street to the back property line of the City Hall lot, or about half of the lot area that City Hall sits on, just to give you a picture of how big 7,500 square feet is. It's not a substantial area. Typically, their management plan calls for mowing first three to four years, and then the possibility of burning after that on a three-year basis. So, it's not like they're burning every year. Typically, for prairie management, burning occurs on a three to five-year basis. I recommend, and the planning commission recommends approval of this management plan. Condition of it is that part of this prairie area will be on the right-of-way, so we're suggesting and making a condition of the recommendation that they notify the private, private utilities in the right-of-way that the burning will occur.
Okay. It's your pleasure.
A move for approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any other discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Danny. Next on the agenda, we have application of Carbone's Pizza for a class beer, beer, class B beer and class C wine license for 207 Second Street. Move for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, we had two of our licenses be turned in or not renewed, and that's why we have two on the agenda tonight. Is there any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item five, we have application of Anton Creo Mason LLC for a class beer license for 517 Second Street. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item eight, review bids and award contract for mill and lay, for mill and overlay project. Mr. Tom, are you going to speak to that? I think everybody has received that in their packets. I think you want to walk through the process and where we're taking the money.
Okay, I think, I think I have that a little better, so. This year, for the mill and overlay project, the base bid was going to be from Cooley Road, from 11th Street toward Carmichael, a little past Associated Bank driveway. With that bid, we also had eight alternatives. The bids came in, and Monarch Paving was a low bid at a total, to do the base bid and the eight alternatives, at $426,172.90. We had budgeted $275,000 for the mill and overlay project, and we also had $130,000 for maintenance program, which considered, consisted of crack filling, seal coating, and slurry seal flex patches. So, at the Public Works Committee meeting, the decision was made to combine the two monies for the mill and overlay and for the maintenance, and that came up to $405,000. But funding was also available for the bathhouse parking lot, which was $43,079, and that funding would come from the parking utilities. Another alternate was lakefront, lakefront park walking paths for a little over $13,000 that would come from the, I guess it was decided on the park trail funds.
Okay.
So, with those two alternates off of the base bid, it, it comes out to about $370,000. And it was a request from the Public Works that any monies left over that would be contingents or held in for other maintenance projects in the fall.
Any questions?
I have some.
Yeah.
How, what, when I did the math on this, the total we'll have left for crack filling and slurry seal and all that is $34,961, and then that's not accounting for engineering fees. How much is, how much are we spending on engineering fees? I don't, I don't see.
That was about three and a half percent is what's anticipated for that.
Two percent?
Three.
Three and a half.
I thought you said two.
Twelve will be spent. So, we're going to have about $20,000 for, $21,000 for crack filling and, is that?
And then the other thing?
We had $130,000 budgeted, and now we're going down to $20,000, so what can we accomplish with that, I guess, is what I'm wondering.
Well, the other thing we have to consider is that some of these projects, these mill and overlay projects, once we mill the streets off after we did some core samples, is that we want to make sure that, we might have to do some more patching, so, you know, these could vary a little bit also, so.
Right, but the bottom line is that we're, let's say it varies, let's say we have $20,000 left over after everything is all said and done for slurry seal and crack filling and, you know, flex patching. I guess I'm not aware as to how much all the, the crack, all that costs extra, so what can we accomplish with $20,000?
I met with some contractors last week and some this week, and we're, I'm getting, still going to continue getting prices, and, and now that I know, you know, that we have about that to work with, that I would like to do whatever we can afford for that price.
I think, Mary, the question was priorities, and they decided, the Public Works decided that the street mill and overlay were, at this point in time, more important than the...
Oh, I absolutely agree with that. I'm just concerned about, I mean, we went, we dropped at $110,000, so I was just kind of trying to figure out, you know, but I absolutely agree that that's the priority. I don't have a problem with what we're doing, I'm just curious what we can do with $20,000.
Not a whole lot.
No, I don't have anything in mind, that's why I'm asking, what, what Tom has in mind.
We'll prioritize, and whatever we can afford, well, I'm sure we can get a few streets crack filled. I think that's the best bang for the buck is a crack filling.
I was going to ask a similar question the other way around, saying of the work that you're doing to do the mill and overlay, how much of the $130,000 are you alleviating that you're going to be, so you're going to, are you leaving at $100,000 or only alleviating $20,000, which is leaving you $70,000 that you're not spending this year, on what? So, similar question, different direction. So, what are we, aren't we going to get done?
That was a lot less complicated.
What aren't we going to get done that we planned on doing?
What do we normally spend on crack filling on an average year?
That's what we've kind of done the last few years, was about that. We do have a crack tar kettle that we can, can use. It's just been a staffing issue, and it's been more efficient to contract it out, although we do have, I think, like five pallets of crack filler material and a tar kettle, so with a good season, maybe we can get some done within, with in-house project.
Okay. Lee or John, any other thoughts or comments?
When we did 11th Street, we had some problems with restoration at the end of that project, and I think it was the same company we're looking at here.
No.
It wasn't? Okay. I just want to make sure that our restoration at the end of it is as good as what we ended up with 11th Street at the end, that we did make some procedure changes so that restoration is completed.
Mind you, we changed engineering firms as well.
Right. Just want to bring that back up because they were back up there three or four times on that big project, so.
And coordinate with Xcel Energy too, because that was an issue with them.
Right.
Any other questions?
That's right, it was.
Okay.
I'd make a motion.
Okay.
By me, that we award the bid to Monarch Paving, low bid, $426,172.90, that we remove the bathhouse parking lot, alternate B and alternate H, lakefront park pads, to be funded by the Parking Fund and the Park Trail Fund respectively, for a total of approximately $370,000. With any remaining funds to be used for repairs that we talked about.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item nine is consider storm sewer repairs on Fifth Street and Elm Street. Tom, where did you go? You're back on.
During the recent heavy storms, about two and a half weeks ago, we had some issues with some of our storm, stormwater systems. One was a manhole or a catch basin on the Fifth and Elm Street, actually just by the alley in between, on Elm Street in between Fourth and Fifth. Because this was, I believe that it's an emergency project, we did not bid this out, we just got quotes from Gary Zappa, so I'd like to try to get this repaired as soon as possible.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
A second, with the funds coming from contingency.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Kind of why we have contingency for these kinds of things, it's a good use of the funds.
And this replaces the grate on top as well, right?
Yes, sir.
There's kind of a homemade grate there that's actually very dangerous that we need to replace.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is consider storm sewer repairs on Ninth and Pitt Street. Same issues there?
Same issues there. This is just, instead of a catch basin, this is a manhole, it's about eight feet deep and five foot diameter, has, I think, five different pipes coming into it. So, it's, it's a big, bigger project that the public, than the Public Works crews can, and our equipment can, can do, so.
Got you.
It's another area that the street is starting to settle, and it's pretty dangerous also.
Move for approval. Is there a second?
Second, with funds coming from contingency again.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
What happens at this location when we get a lot of water?
This is, again, part of the stormwater study that we did a few years ago. The water comes down from Ninth, Ninth and Vine, and it's about a 20-inch pipe, and it continues to blow off the cover. We did bolt the cover down last year to keep the cover on. The manhole itself is made out of, constructed out of brick, individual bricks, and there's so much water that comes down, it's just washed the whole west side of the manhole out. So, when we reconstruct it, it'll be with solid cast concrete cylinder, so that should hold up a lot better.
We estimated it to be about 100 years old.
Wow.
Right? Isn't that what?
I think so. It's a good guess.
That's a good guess, I think so.
I'll mention this, in both of these cases, I think that one of the things we've seen is there's been a lot of debris in the stormwater system, and I think the one on Fifth and Elm, part of what was going on is as the bricks were collapsing, that all the sludge or all the dirt was washing into the stormwater system, which helped plug it up. So, that's part of what's going to be repaired here, and on both of those.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item 11 is Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce Tourism Application for the special event permit for the Arts Festival on 9/24 and 9/25 2011 in Lakefront Park. Our recommendation is to approve the Spirit of St. Croix Festival special permit and designate it as a community event contingent upon the parks and public works performing pre-event and post-event inspection of the grounds.
So moved.
Yep, and reducing the level of insurance from $3 million to $1 million general liability plus a $1 million umbrella.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We did, we did this last year. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. New business, establishment of Altromatic Districts.
Update on projects.
Pardon? Oh, sorry, Tom, or Dennis, update on projects, sorry about that. We're moving along here.
It's okay. Just briefly, update on projects for projects either under construction or under design. Second and Vine Street, which was previously approved, just an update to the schedule, it's currently planned to be the construction occurring on Sunday, August 14th. That is the latest date from the contractor. Mill and overlay project, I believe we've covered that one. Anticipated construction would be last half of August through September, through the end of September. Grandview Park, stormwater improvements, we're anticipating to come back with bids at the end of this month for the September 6th meeting, and maybe jumping down to items seven and eight, both for the lakefront bathhouse pathway corrections, as well as the White Camp Park pathway improvements. Those would be expected to come back at the end of August for, for approval at September 6th meeting also.
So, do you have an update on five then, or not?
Yes, five, we are currently working on the feasibility report and still gathering some, whatever existing data that exists on Vine Street, which is limited to some effect because of the age of the street.
Do you have a target date for presenting the report?
We're shooting for the end of September.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bossler?
Can we get a start date from law greens? I know it's set on August, but...
Yeah, I revised that to August because it previously said July, but I don't have a current, I don't know.
I think general building permits should be in a relatively short timeframe.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks.
Now, we'll move on to the establishment of Altromatic Districts, ordinance number 13 dash 11. Mr. Willie.
About a month ago, I made a preliminary presentation with the map based on the county wards that you approved at that time. There is just one slight change, the sliding hill, for lack of a better term, over on Vine Street here. When they looked at the maps, again, ended up being in a different ward than they thought, but it didn't really impact any population. So, this is the current proposal, has to be approved, the change has to be made by ordinance. We did make the proper publication on that, that we were required to do by law. Basically, it rescinds the current maps, current districts, and establishes new districts. We will, Altromatic Districts one and five will continue to vote here at City Hall, three and four, the new districts, three and four will vote at the United Methodist Church, and two and six will vote at the County Government Center. And I'll mention this again later when I talk about the elections, this does not apply to the upcoming election on August 9th. We've had a handful of people come in and ask, what district do I vote in next week? This will take place with the first election in 2012, which we anticipate will be either February or April. So, I don't know if there's any questions or, once we get this, when it's approved with the county, then we'll prepare our formal maps that we will have available.
When do we have to have this in by?
It's within 60 days of the approval of the ward, so we have, we have some time, but...
Any thoughts, questions? There's no anticipated changes, we're...
No, the county wards, other than they found that one, there was one, which we had correct on our maps, there was one slight annexation change they made out by Highway 35, and then that one block that was in the wrong census district.
So, this is it?
This is it, unless you direct us to try to do something different.
I will move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Roll call.
Morsett?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Okay. Move to adopt ordinance 13 dash 11. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Before or after we, through this election cycle, as I noted last time, we will send a notice, probably via letter as opposed to postcard, to all of the registered voters so that they're aware of, even if they're in the same district, so they're aware of where they're voting and what district they'll be in. There'll still be confusion, I'm sure, the first time we do it, and unfortunately, that will be the, the biggest election coming up will be the 2012 Presidential, so we'll have people at the wrong place, but we'll do our best to get the message out there where everybody's supposed to be.
But we have a city election in April, right?
We do, but whenever you have the first big election after you make a change, that's when you tend to find a lot of people going to their old spot, but, so, yes, we'll have a huge big election this year, I'm sure.
The city election isn't big?
20% versus 70, but...
We're kidding.
Rich, anything? John?
No, I'm good.
Lee?
Well, I guess it has to be, you know, I enjoy representing what was the district, you know?
That no longer will exist.
I'll watch out in a year.
Yep, all right.
No, I'm fine.
Randy?
No.
Mary, anything?
Uh.
Sorry. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Devin. Special assessments for 2011 Sidewalk Kerb and Gutter Replacement Program, Preliminary Resolution 15 dash 11. I think everyone has seen that and has...
I have one comment.
I have one comment on it.
Okay.
On Fifth Street, 1005 at Oak. How much of that is being... Tom? Fifth Street, 1,000, 1,005th Street or Oak Street?
This is sidewalk.
Yeah, it's just the size, is this...
I believe it's sidewalk or curb and gutter. Okay. It's about halfway down, Tom.
If in the next year, if we end up ripping up Fifth Street to put in, if one of our solutions is to tear that up and put in a new storm sewer, how are we going to end up tearing up what we're putting in here? Okay, hang on there.
Is that 1,005 Fifth Street?
Correct.
Is that sidewalk or curb?
It's sidewalk. It's about 42 feet of sidewalk that's low and the water sits in there and it freezes in the winter, but that shouldn't be disturbed if we would do any kind of stormwater, no.
Okay. And the Elm Street, 421 Elm Street, is that the alleyway we've been talking about, the flooded alleyway, or is that the one on the other side? On Fourth and Fifth, 421...
Oh, there it is.
Which alley is that one?
I don't have, I just have 421 Elm. It's 15 feet of sidewalk and then there's a carriage walk that comes out from there out to the curb and gutter.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I know where that is. All right. So I just want to make sure neither one of these are going to be impacted by any future work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving to suspend the rules.
Yep. Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Yaku?
Yes.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Move to adopt resolution 1511.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, consider renewal of deer control program with the River Valley... Did I skip something?
1611.
Oh, gosh. All right, go back to C. 2011 Mill and Overlay Project Special Assessment for Curb and Gutter Resolution 16-11.
Move to... Have to suspend the rule again.
Yep.
Move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Hoggit?
Yes.
Vanslow?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yep.
Yaku?
Yes.
Move to adopt 1611.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, consider the renewal of a deer control program for River Valley Deer Management. Kind of bring this back again, Lon Faye is here tonight and basically, we're looking at the same program that we had last year. Lon, do you want to just kind of update us and I wanted counsel input on how they felt about it?
Certainly. We had a very successful program last year. We were able to remove 42 deer from the city of Hudson. There are still plenty more of them out there. It's an ongoing, it works best as an ongoing program to continually thin the herd. You'll never, you know, achieve eradication. We had zero problems. We had zero problems with the police department. Everyone agreed from the committee that we had that it was a success and Chief Jensen, former Mayor Tom Redner, and people from the community who were represented in the committee voted to renew the, that it would be a good idea to recommend the program for renewal for this year. So with that in mind, we are ready to go. We have the insurance in place. We're ready to, we need, we need a letter, a letter is required from the mayor's office to the DNR to request this hunt again. Everything else would just follow along the same procedures as we did last year.
Comments?
I have a few questions.
Yep. We'll get to you in a second here.
I'm not going to really oppose it, but if you took 42, we're at 38 now within the population of last year's GMU 60 from the DNR, correct?
No.
Because you said we have 80. If you look on the number one under your contract, origin...
Uh-huh.
Per square mile.
80 deer per square mile. Healthy population should be 20 to 30 per square mile.
That would be true.
So I'd like to see a report from the DNR's estimates for this year.
This has not changed from this year, but I'll see if I can accommodate you. I do not write those reports. However, let's just do some, do some basic math. If there were 80, okay, we could probably assume, just be in general, that half are males, half are females, okay? So we took out primarily females, although we encompassed about a three-mile square area, not a one-mile square area. In other words, we're left with somewhere between, on the low end, just say low end, 50 does of breeding age who either had twins or triplets this year, we're back up to 200 to 300. It's, it's a...
So we're not, we're...
We're not reducing.
...reducing conditions would be?
Yeah.
No, sir.
I would doubt that the DNR does a survey every year on our area, do they?
Probably not on our area. They do do extensive, they do extensive work estimating.
Yep.
Some people agree, some people don't, but...
I would just feel more comfortable, I want to say it's updated in black and white numbers.
Okay? Anybody else?
Question. Last year, I believe we approved 150 feet. What was the shooting distance that we approved?
300, 200?
No. It was 150, right? It was 150.
150, right?
Or was it 100? I'm not sure. It was either 100 or 150, I'd go back and look.
I thought it was 150 and you wanted to go back to 100 this time? You felt it would have been more successful if you were within 100 feet?
It is easier, yes.
So is that stuff that if this, if we move forward with this, are you going to revisit those numbers and, or is it going to be the exact same?
Whatever the council prefers.
I guess...
It's not an issue. We'll go either way.
What I, what I wanted from the council, whether you wanted to continue to pursue and continue to have a, we'll have a deer management committee that I'll appoint. Mayor Redner has, former Mayor Redner has agreed to serve on that committee again. Think we'll have, I'd like to have somebody from the council on that committee also, but if, you know, we have some new members on the council, if they don't like this idea, I'd like you to tell me and we'll not proceed, but just, that's why I brought it back. Anybody have any?
Well, my question being, since I am new, what is the, what happens if we don't manage the deer? At what rate do they grow and continue to be pests or not pests, or obviously, they're living amongst our environment here, so they have impact. So if we don't have a deer management strategy, what happens?
What happens? More and more of them get hit by cars. You see them multiplying and eating the wild, the fauna, the gardens and whatnot of the people that live there. What really happens in Hudson and in cities like this is that the diversity of the ecosystem is damaged. Is it, is it a crisis, you know, sound the alarm? No, probably not. But what happens is the deer are very efficient breeders and very efficient eaters, and they eat everything in sight that they can, okay, as their numbers increase. If you see what it looks like as this progresses, go down to Chicago and look in the forest preserves in Chicago, there's a browse line at about five feet and the deer eat everything up to the browse line and they die off in the wintertime. That's something that could happen here, but what happens is then other species can't eat those same preferred foods because the deer have eaten them. Primarily, the benefit for the public is reduced automobile accidents and reduction in complaints to the city of the deer are eating my flowers and they're in the backyard, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so...
Well, let's not forget about Lyme disease.
And Lyme's disease, yes.
Rich?
My wife said if I didn't approve this, I couldn't come home.
Laurie?
I would just attest to the fact that there are, they're still reproducing in rather large numbers. We had a fawn literally on our doorstep this fall, or this spring, and I saw two others the same, within the same couple-day period. There's twins in the neighborhood. There's still a lot of deer around. We're not anywhere near eradication. I mean, it's just a management, so I would be in support of it.
Lee, any thoughts?
I think last year went really smoothly and we were also enjoying watching a herd cross the street just yesterday.
All right. John, any?
Well, I, while you're talking about vegetation, I think there's a place out east that has done a complete lockout of deer and they noticed, I don't know, many, many types of species and other animals that live there because the deer do eat all the vegetation. So I would definitely be in favor of control. I think it just makes sense, so...
Randy? No, no comment? Jeff, you were, I'm sure you want to make a comment?
I'd like to, a couple things.
Okay. You'd take your name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Jeff Ritchie. I live up at 499 A Street. I've lived here all my life. It's nice to see some happy new faces here. I like to see that. Change is always good. Even the mayor, known him all my life. Hi, Jack, I know you're watching. Quick one. Let me just start off by saying that I am not against deer hunting. I think that Lonny came up to my house this winter. I called him up and said, hey, I got a deer with a turn leg. Come on up here and take her out. He was there in a half hour. He didn't get it, but another gentleman followed behind him and took it out. I was very impressed and I was very happy. I love the deer, but I won't watch them suffer. I have sponsored deer hunts in my front porch for probably the last 30 years with Mr. Bro. They've done them on a three to a five-year basis on occasion. Last year, I wasn't against it and I wasn't for it. I'm also, like you, married. I truly believe that the deer, at least in my area, and I'm pretty honest and blunt, you can ask, most of the people here who know me, I'm blunt. I see seven deer now, so let's multiply that by two. I'll give them the benefit of the doubt. There's 14. If you guys are going to continue to do this, I learned something new today. I didn't realize that a bow and arrow was not a firearm. It's a weapon. So therefore, there is no 300-foot or 100-yard rule by the DNR statutes for a bow and arrow. So imagine this, you want a hundred feet. If you go where I was sitting and you go to the front curb, my lot is 296 feet long. At 100 feet, his butt can be up against my fence, shooting a deer in my neighborhood. I don't appreciate that. Two, if you're going to do it every year, fine, and I agree with him that they need to at least maintain it. He can't argue this fact that in the first month that they're doing it, the ratio of kill is probably around 70 percent. They're no different than any other creature. They ain't dumb. They figure they're going to get hunt, they take off and they run. Now, I truly believe that if we're going to do it every year, we bring this down to a two-month period, we make it quick, we get it done with, because towards the end of the season, they're startled, they're scared, they won't even come near any of us. I can actually walk out and give two of them an apple, okay? So we're going to cause more injury, more harm the later it goes in the season because they're, pardon me, like we are, smart. They know to get the hell out of the way. They have a sense. They understand what's going on. I'm not against what he does, but I am against how long it takes. And I'm also against, nobody shows up. If you actually walk the neighborhoods and ask most of the people up in my area, most of them would say, no, they don't want the deer. But amazingly enough, none of them are, want to get out of their chairs to come down and say, hey, don't shoot the deer. So all I'm going to ask you guys is to consider two things. I think they should at least abide by, I consider a bow and arrow a firearm. If I ran down city of Hudson with a bow and arrow, you'd probably arrest me, okay? I truly believe that we should have at least the 300-foot rule, okay? The 300-foot rule doesn't get them any closer to the deer. They're standing in the damn woods where they're supposed to be standing, 300 feet is irrelevant. The deer is going to pass by them, it's going to be within 10 feet. They shoot the deer. So this 300-foot rule or 100-foot rule, I don't think has any bearing on anything. The other thing that I would ask is that if we're going to stay with four months at a crack through the whole season, then we do it every other year, or we bring it down to two months every year. That's all I'm requesting.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Is this going to come back? What are you looking for?
I'm looking to say whether or not we should continue to send it on. I'll send the letter to get the approval from the DNR and if the DNR gives the approval... Yes, sir.
You know, this board, whatever you've got for it?
Yes, sir.
There's no reason to stack it up. I've got plenty of free time, so do you like somebody that, to help?
I will, I will consider that, Mr. Ritchie. So that's what I'm asking, if you want to continue this, I'll send the letter and then I will get the deer management committee put together to work out the rules and make recommendations back to us.
And then I'd like to...
Sure. I think it's the same contract we had last year, isn't it?
Yes, you did. Oh, we didn't change the date.
Yeah, I think a couple more dates need to be changed.
Yep.
We'll just look at, I mean, just...
Yep. That would be fine.
I'll make a motion that we send this to, to have you write the letter, move it forward to a subcommittee and bring it back for a recommendation.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, five to one.
I'd just like to point out, Mary, as far as the Lyme's disease, we just can't hit the taxes.
Yeah.
I know. Tell it to my sister-in-law.
Thank you. Next, we have appointment for the Hudson Housing Authority. Barb Berkey is term as a member of the Hudson Authority, expired at the end of July. She has agreed to serve another term. Her appointment, I'd like approval for her to be appointed for another five-year term to the Hudson Housing Authority. Is there a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any communication from any alderperson?
I would like to say that the parks, public work people are keeping the park immaculate. It looks great down there despite the flooding and the constant challenges of the water. The park looks great all the time, so I think it's a good thing for Hudson and just want to say, way to go.
Good job, Tom. City Attorney, City Administrator, Mr. Willie.
Just one brief thing with the election coming up Tuesday, I just wanted to go through a couple of things. As I mentioned before, you'll be at your regular polling places where you've been the last several years. The new districts don't take effect yet, so everybody should go where they went before. Absentee, there has been some changes in state law. The last day to request an absentee ballot by mail is Thursday, August 4th. If we get it by mail after that date, we will not honor the request. The last day to vote in person, which is also a change from the past, is this Friday, August 5th. We are open Thursday and Friday, correct, Nancy, till 5:00 PM, which is a half hour past our normal time. So on Monday, you will not, in the past, you used to be able to vote the day before. You're no longer able to do that. And all ballots must be returned by Election Day. There's been some confusion on that as well. If for some reason you forget to mail it, you can drop it off down here at City Hall during the day on Monday, if you forget, or Tuesday, I'm sorry, Election Day, if you forget to mail it. But it has to be at the polling place by the time the polls close on Tuesday.
And Devin, if someone has received an absentee ballot and let's say they realize it's Election Day, they can still come to vote in person?
Correct. If they do not return the absentee ballot, then they can vote that day. Just a reminder, those people that are on the permanent absentee list that always get the ballot, they need to return the ballot even if they choose not to vote so they can maintain on that list. If you do not return the ballot, you're removed from the permanent list, so that's just another... But I just wanted to let people know because there have been some changes. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.